Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council on Redevelopment Agency Meeting of October 26, 2010. Call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
I can't see, but do we have flowers in front? Then I'd like to thank the San Bruno Garden Club. Thank you very much. They always provide a floral arrangement for our meetings. We've had the roll call, Pledge of Allegiance. Our city attorney, please. Lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The item number three announcements. There will be a town hall meeting regarding the Glenview Fire Recovery Efforts this Friday, October 29th at 6:30 PM at St. Roberts Church, 1380 Crystal Springs Road in San Bruno. And also, we also have the, Rico, could you mention the Halloween parade, please?
Mr. Mayor.
One moment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, for the Project Pride Committee of Councilmember Salazar and I, this Friday, starting at 3:30 is the first parade, 4:15 is the second parade for its annual Halloween Parade at the shops of Tam Fran Mall. So everyone is welcome to participate. We'll be downstairs by the escalator, and that's where the parade will begin.
All right. Mr. Lubke.
Yes, Alan Lubke, Fleetwood Drive. Will the town hall meeting regarding the Glenview Fire Recovery Efforts be televised on Channel 1?
It will, not live. It'll be recorded and replayed.
Recorded and then, okay.
Yes.
And I would like to suggest that a handout be made available at the town hall meeting showing the 30-inch gas pipelines running through San Bruno. The maps provided by PG&E on their website do not provide enough detail for a basis for public discussion of the issues.
Thank you. We have some presentations this evening, which is always nice. I'd like to call on Mr. Michael Joseph from Walgreens.
Good evening. My name is Mike Joseph. I am the store manager of the Westlake Store Walgreens in Daly City. I'm also a community leader for six stores in the immediate area around my store, one of which is the San Bruno store. And I brought with me Earl Edwards, who happens to be the manager of our San Bruno store. I must say that it gives me a great deal of pleasure to present to you monies that we have collected from our communities by store management and its employees for the victims of the San Bruno Fire. Our hearts and thoughts go out to them. Also, I'd like to add that if there's anything that we at Walgreens can do for our community, please call on us. Please call on either Earl or myself, and we'll be more than glad to be there for you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'd like to come down. Earl, would you like to say something?
Sure. Hello. Thank you again for having us. My name is Earl Edwards, and I am the current manager of the San Bruno Walgreens. I would be proud to be your contact for anything, just like Mike said, for anything that you would need as a community, for whatever we can do, please let us know. Thank you.
Wonderful. Let me come down and accept that on behalf of the council and the city. Walgreens has been a great part of our community for a long time, so you're on Channel 1 live, so I'm sure you're going to be getting a lot of calls on your offer. We also have Mr. Patrick Ahern from Equinox. Patrick?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Ahern. I'm the general manager of Equinox Fitness in San Mateo. We have a good number of employees and many more members who are residents of the San Bruno area. So as this, the need for this came about, people stepped up and thought we should do something to show our support for the community. So we had an, we had a member event coming up anyway, and the personal training department stepped up and suggested that we do what came to be known as a Push-Up-a-thon to raise money for the city. And basically, the way that took place was they went around to our members and asked for their pledge, their support in the fundraising efforts. And for each push-up that they could do in one minute, they would contribute whatever they committed to. So 25 cents some people, $10 other people. So all told, we were able to raise about $3,300, and so we have that here for you tonight.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I wouldn't be able to give that much.
The outpouring of generosity from all over, I can't just say San Bruno, it's not just the peninsula, it's the state and around the country, has been overwhelming, and we can't say any more than thank you, thank you, thank you, very much. Review of the agenda. Any items on the agenda? Irene, would you like to say something?
I just wanted to ask a silly question. Do you know how many push-ups that represented?
The total number, I'm not sure, but I was amazed to find that some people, not myself, some people, in one minute could do over 100 push-ups.
Say that again there. Patrick, please.
So I was saying I was surprised to find that some people were able to pull off over 100 push-ups in one minute.
Wow.
So I think the average was in the 60 to 70 range, but a couple people got way up there. So all told, I'd say maybe 700 to 800 push-ups.
Please convey our thanks.
Will do.
That's great. Wonderful. Okay, review of the agenda. Any questions on the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October the 12th, 2010, and the special city council meeting of October 19th, 2010? Changes, errors, omissions? Mr. Lubke.
Alan Lubke, Fleetwood Drive. I see there are minutes of the special city council meeting of October the 19th. I would like to have answers to questions regarding the differences between a regular city council meeting and a special city council meeting. What are the notification requirements for a regular city council meeting, and by what media are these notifications made? What are the notifications for a special city council meeting? Are these any different than a regular city council meeting? And by what media are these notifications made? Were the requirements met for notification for the special city council meeting of October the 19th? And finally, what is the policy on televising city council meetings, both regular and special? What is the policy on replaying the televised meetings for a regular city council meeting and special city council meeting?
All right. Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get an answer to your question, to the city attorney, Mr. Lenzon.
Pursuant to state law under the Brown Act, a special meeting is required to have 24 hours notice before the start of the special meeting. It's put on the city's website, and the agenda for that meeting has to be posted. There's no requirement that any city council meeting be televised, but I understand that the policy of the city has been not to televise special meetings. For regular meetings, the agenda has to be posted 72 hours ahead of the meeting, and it's also put on the city's website, as I understand, and the city's policy is to televise its regular meetings.
Did it answer your question?
What if you don't have a website?
Well, it's posted at City Hall, and it's posted in the library. Thank you. So regarding the minutes, any other errors, omissions, questions? They'll stand approved as submitted. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by council member, citizen, or staff. Questions on the consent calendar or action?
Through the chair, I'll move to poll 7D.
Okay. Item 7D. Any action on the remainder?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent items.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 7D, accept. Letters of resignation from Personnel Board Member David Thomas, Culture and Arts Commissioner Melody Tobin, and Citizens Crime Prevention Member Carol Campbell. Declare committee member vacancies and direct the city clerk to initiate the process for appointment of new members.
Mr. Mayor, it's always my pleasure to thank volunteers for their service in these committees. Dave Thomas is well-known, and so is Melody Tobin. Carol Campbell, relatively new person on the committee, she's resigning through health reasons. We wish her well in the coming weeks and months, and just thank them all for their service. With that, I will move to accept 7D.
Second.
Motion second to accept item 7D. Any question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item eight is a public hearing. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. Hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance of the City of San Bruno amending and restating the development plan for Crystal Springs Terrace Apartments and adopt a resolution approving a planned development permit and architectural review permit. Staff, please. We'll hear staff, please. I'll open it up to the public in a few minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The application before you is for changes to the Crystal Springs Terrace Apartments complex, which is located at 2,000 Crystal Springs Road. I'm sure you're probably aware, familiar with the project, but I just wanted to give you a couple of highlights and orient you a little bit to the project site. The complex currently has 433 units, 628 parking spaces, a recreation building, a couple of swimming pools, significant site landscaping, and all of this is in a little over 12-acre site. It was constructed in 1972 with changes approved by the City Council and Planning Commission in 1974 and 1989. So now to orient you a little bit with this slide. The first red circle here is the existing recreation building that we'll be talking a little bit about. Moving down the slide towards the south is the existing main entrance that you're probably familiar with, and there's a small existing leasing building that is located there, I'm sorry, a leasing office that's in a former residential unit. The next circle is the location of the proposed parking lot, which is kind of in a pie shape there. And then down at the bottom of the site is an existing surface parking lot where the new recreation and leasing building is proposed. So the project right now has three major components that I'd like to go over with you. The first is a new recreation and leasing building. It's proposed in the corner of the existing surface parking lot that we were just looking at, down at the south end of the complex. The first floor is proposed to be a little over 3,000 square feet, with the second floor at about 2,300, for a total of 5,470 square feet. They propose to locate all of their leasing functions and recreation functions in one combined building, and so that's a major element of the project. That's a good advantage to the property owners. So it would include a fitness area, game room, and resident lounge, along with the leasing function. The architectural style of the building is really inspired by buildings that we would often find in natural areas or in the mountains, and this really complements the location at the southern city limits, which is really very park-like and heavily tree in that area. So the style of the building really would update the image of the complex and would really set the standard for any future changes that they may make to the site over the years. During the review process, the Architectural Review Committee had several comments, which have been implemented into the style of the building. Notably, they've added additional architectural details on the ground floor. They've integrated the monument sign into the design of the building, and also decided to paint the, this building to match the rest of the buildings that are in the complex to tie it in and to have that unity be stronger. That was a recommendation of the Architectural Review Committee. Near this new building, there would be new landscaping, which has been reviewed by staff and by the committee and well-received, as well as a new trash enclosure, which would accommodate recycling and garbage in one structure, which would be designed to match the architecture of the building. The second major element of the project is the conversion of the existing recreation building into four new apartments. So the applicant would replace the exterior materials and paint it to match the rest of the buildings in the complex. And I did want to point out and discuss a little bit, since the applicant is proposing an increase in the density, it is appropriate to review, in this case, whether ordinance 1284 applies to this project. So as the city council is aware, ordinance 1284 limits an increase in density in certain circumstances. So specifically, it states that density cannot be increased in residential districts. So as part of their submittal materials, the applicant has supplied a legal interpretation of ordinance 1284, which is included as an attachment to your staff report. And that says that Crystal Springs is in a planned development district and not a residential district, and that those two things are distinct, and therefore, ordinance 1284 does not apply. Staff has reviewed their interpretation and finds their interpretation to be reasonable, really on two different levels. First, on a technical or kind of legal level, because a planned development district is different than an R1 or an R2 zoning district. It was at the time, the 1284 was passed, and it is today as well. So that's continued on. And then second, really in a practical sense, when ordinance 1284 was passed, it was really in a reaction to sort of a fear that single-family neighborhoods would change and become higher density. It wasn't really in reaction to existing apartment complexes, which this one was, having a minor increase in density. So really, from a practical point of view, staff does agree that 1284 doesn't really apply to this case, just on an everyday sort of logical basis. The final determination, however, on this issue does rest with the city council. And so as the ordinance and resolutions that are before you tonight were prepared, that increase in density is included. So your approval of the project tonight would indicate your concurrence with that interpretation, that ordinance 1284 does not apply to this project. So if I can move on to the third major element of the project, and that is a new parking lot that would serve the new residential units. It's proposed in an area of existing landscaping and would result in a small approximately 1% reduction in landscaping on the site overall. It would result in 12 net new parking spaces, and so it's 11 parking spaces for four new units. So it actually slightly exceeds today's standard for multifamily units, and so it would be a very slight improvement to parking in the site overall. They are proposing to construct the new parking lot of pervious paving, so this is a positive aspect of the project in terms of environmental or green building goals that we have. The small existing leasing office would be converted back into a residential unit for which it's always been approved, but essentially, the rest of the buildings on the site would remain unchanged. The city council may recall that the owners removed some trees along Crystal Springs that was with the heritage tree permit. It was some time ago. So staff did just want to point out that the trees on the slope have been replanted, and there are a few that remain to be planted, but those are addressed in the conditions of approval here. They will not be double-counted, and it will be fully planted, and those arrangements have been made. And so in regards to neighborhood outreach, staff notified neighbors prior to the Architectural Review Committee meeting, Planning Commission public hearing, and the city council public hearing. We did receive comments from one resident of London Court, who expressed a concern about the parking, but upon additional discussion at the Planning Commission meeting and with staff, she did seem satisfied with the parking that would be provided for this project, and we have not heard any additional concerns from her since that time. When the Planning Commission reviewed the project in August, they passed two resolutions recommending that the city council approve the project. They did not have any additional changes or recommend any additional conditions of approval. So tonight, there are two items for your consideration. The first is the ordinance, which would amend the development plan. And so in summary, that would increase the number of units by four, add the new recreation and leasing building, decrease the landscaping slightly, and increase the number of parking spaces. The second item is a resolution, which would approve the planned development permit and the architectural review permit. And so these are the, kind of the implementing tools to implement the actual development plan, and this also includes the conditions of approval that would be placed on the project. So moving forward in terms of next steps, if the city council approves this first reading, then the ordinance would return to city council on November 9th, and then, of course, become effective 30 days later. In closing, staff would like to highlight the fact that we have worked very closely with this applicant over a fairly long stretch of time, and they really have worked with us well and made changes to the project to make those improvements, and as well as the recommendations made by the Architectural Review Committee. So staff recommends that the city council introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolution tonight, and I would be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. I just wanted to touch bases on ordinance 1284 to make sure that I have a clear understanding. So if it was in a residential zone district, which it's not, for example, an apartment building came down and they built it back up, but they increased the, they increased the units, it would increase the density, which then would activate ordinance 1284 and would not be allowed.
No.
Correct.
I'm going to go with the non-lawyer.
If it was in a residential district, for instance, on Mills or anywhere in that area, if it was in a residential district, yes, it would activate 1284. Since this is not a residential district, it would not activate 1284.
That's correct. That's the way planned development districts work. I've been dealing with them for over 30 years. They're an anomaly almost. It's its own separate zoning district. You can put anything you want in a planned unit, well, a planned development district, as long as it's consistent with the general plan. One of the interesting things about ordinance 1284 is that it amended, it amended and has the requirement for residential districts, but it never touches the general plan. It doesn't amend the general plan. If it did, then this would be, you'd probably be going to an election for this change in density, but it doesn't. It doesn't amend it, and this planned development district, as amended, or as you would amend it, is consistent with the general plan. So I, the opinion that the applicant's attorney gave, in my interpretation is a correct one, it also pointed out that the McDonough Holland attorneys from that firm also gave a, they were apparently, have been involved in this project before by the prior city attorney, and they had given a similar opinion themselves, and I agree with it. 1284 is, does not have to be amended for this, for this project.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Through the chair.
Mr. Ibera.
I like the look of the new rep building, and a lot of glass and things, and I think it's in an appropriate place. I'm a little concerned about this conversion, though, and I'm going to, I'm going to harp on the Planning Commission, because they're always requesting all four elevations, and I'm having a hard time understanding what this building's really going to look like. It's my understanding, and I apologize for not seeing it, my understanding that it is sort of set into the hill, or it's got some retaining walls around it?
It is, yes.
So if I'm looking at this lower floor, that's a, that's two units at the lower floor, what are these windows looking at? Are they looking at retaining walls? I mean, or is it just one side that is, I mean, I've got three elevations here, and one elevation is really a one-story. The west elevation is, has, you know, is the upper floor only, and so the lower floor So I'm assuming there are three sides of this building that are open.
We believe that's true. Why don't we ask, if possible, why don't we ask the applicant when they're up here to better explain all four elevations that they're proposing?
Yeah, because, I mean, the original building really doesn't have any openings, so now we're putting openings in it, and you need windows.
Okay. Any other questions?
And if I, if I could, just, there's no other entrances that are being affected. It's all the same entrances, and the, and the parking lot is not off of Crystal Springs. It is, it is a private road access.
The, what's, today, the main entrance would sort of be de-emphasized with the project. And so the location in front of the new recreation and leasing building would kind of become the new main entrance, and the circulation would change a little bit there, but nothing that would have an impact on the city street.
It's an existing entrance.
It's an existing entrance.
And the park, the access to parking lot is from within the property?
Yes.
Not off of Crystal Springs?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael?
In that picture, kind of following up on Councilman Ibera's question, it kind of looks to me like the area, the pie-shaped area that you said would be the new parking lot, isn't quite accessible. It's surrounded by buildings, it appears in that picture. How would cars have access to that area?
There's an internal driveway, and so the parking lot is designed to fit into that space.
I see.
With access from the inside of the complex.
My other question was regarding the, the picture that was on the, on the front of the, of the package. It shows the new building, that one, thank you. This new building is somewhat farther out in, into, closer to Crystal Springs than the older buildings, and I believe that sign that's there is also new, and I'm wondering how that affects visibility up and down Crystal Springs as you pull out of that driveway.
This issue has been reviewed very closely by engineering staff as well as planning staff. The way that the driveway is getting reconfigured, we actually find that it will be an improvement to site visibility. As you exit the complex now, you have to, you're coming out at an angle and look far over your right shoulder, if you're leaving. Now the driveway will be realigned, so it won't be as far of an angle looking over your right shoulder. And actually, that's an important point and clarification. The color rendering that you have in front of you is more of an artist's rendering, and the sign, as agreed upon by staff and by the applicant, would actually be pulled back, and so it wouldn't extend as far out towards the street. And so the other black and white materials that you have in your packet accurately show that, but unfortunately, the color rendering does not. And so it is something that we discussed and verified in the field, staff as well as the applicant, to locate the appropriate location for that sign. There's also going to be some tree removal to improve site visibility at that corner, and replanting, so all of the plants will be of a lower height, and a driver will be able to see over them, which is not the case currently. So we believe that it will be an overall improvement to site visibility.
Okay. And since you mentioned tree removal, it also looks like the new parking lot is going to go where there are some trees currently, and you mentioned replacing trees that were removed previously. You just mentioned some more tree removals and replacing them with shorter ones. Can you kind of just educate me on what the city's policy is on, when we replace trees? Do they have to be of similar size type? What is that policy?
Yeah, there's two different situations here. The first is the trees were removed with the heritage tree permit, and in general, that's a two-for-one replacement, but there's some specific technicalities that have to do with the size, and that's implemented by the Parks Division staff. When there's a development project such as this, generally, what we do in planning is to have a reasonable replacement that is either the same if it's not a heritage tree, or using that double count if it is a heritage tree. So in this, in this case, no trees are going to be double-counted, so to speak, so they have to fully plant to meet their heritage tree requirement, and then they're going to be replacing trees that they're removing as part of the development proposal. So overall, there's going to be an increase of trees on the site.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I just have a quick question. Thank you. First of all, I do appreciate the green aspects of the design. It's great that we're incorporating those in our new developments. I was just having a concern, or is there a concern about pedestrian safety? There's, I was looking at the color rendition, and the girl is walking on the street there. Is there markings? Is there, is there any concerns about people walking in that area with the traffic going in and out now, or going in and out differently, or has that been looked at, or should we look at it? I mean, is there, like, sidewalk markings, or?
There is a change in pavement, and I think that's another thing that we could ask the applicant to address as well. But there's a change in pavement, and then there's curbs that separate the walkway from the parking spaces that are located there.
Okay. And do we have any issues, or has it been reported of any issues of people leaving the Crystal Springs and going across to the park and having issues with traffic going up and down, or nobody does that? I was just wondering.
I haven't heard of that, and it wasn't brought to my attention during the staff review process.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions of staff? I'd like the applicant to come to the podium, please. We have some questions for you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. First of all, I'd like to express our thanks to planning staff. As Laura had mentioned, this has been a, probably a two-and-a-half-year process for us, and we've, we've had a lot of communication with planning staff, and particularly through Laura, so I did want to mention to the, to the council that I think that the planning staff did a great job in, in processing this project for us, and some of it was not easy, but we got through it, and I think that we managed quite well, and I appreciate Laura's efforts in, in helping us get to this point tonight. I'd also like to introduce our team of people that are available for, to answer questions. Mr. Tom Birch, who's counsel for the owner, is available for questions with regards to his interpretation of 1284, and then Ken Dressel and Jim Porter, who are representing the owner, Gerson Baker, tonight. And then Omar Hernandez, from my office, from the architectural office, is here. He developed the drawings for the project. My name is Andy Romundo. I'm the architect for the project. In response to some of the questions that just came up, and I'll address Mr. Abara's questions first about the window openings and the conversion of the existing building. It does sit on a slope. Currently, the side of the building that faces the drive aisle is sort of the single-story element of the building, and then the grade slopes off pretty steeply as you move along the sides. The way that the units are configured, the new units that are gonna be inside of this building are such that the private or bathroom windows are on the backside of the building facing the drive aisle, so we'll have the fewest amount of window openings on that wall. It'll face the drive area, so that's an area where we don't want a lot of openings in the building. And then as you go to the downhill side of the building, this is where the common space of the living room areas are for the units, and so those will have the largest windows, those will have views down the hill. And then the sides of the buildings also have windows into the bedrooms, and they're more open on either side. So the restricted side is the uphill side that faces the drive aisle, and those are basically, that's essentially a plumbing wall with where the bathroom and plumbing stacks go. With regards to the question about pedestrian safety in front of the building, the rendering is maybe a little bit confusing. Do we have in that packet an image of the plan view, Laura? Is there anything in there? Basically, what we created in front of that building is a, is a pretty large concrete landing and a concrete pad area and a walkway that connects from the, from the building and the pedestrian entrance building, so where you sort of see the trellis area in front of the building, is connected with a plaza area and then a walkway that goes back to the new parking. So they, so they are connected, and they're distinct and separate from the drive aisle area.
Okay.
Okay? And then just a couple of general comments that I wanted to make. I think, for us, one of the nice green aspects of this project, and when we were originally conceiving of it, was the idea that when we realized that we couldn't convert the existing, the existing rec building to house both the leasing function and the recreation facilities, and it was decided to create an entirely new building on the site, it gave us the opportunity to reuse the existing building. We found that, just in doing a quick study, that we would have to do so much renovation on that building in order to house the sort of multiple functions that we wanted to put into it, that we would essentially be obliterating the building. We'd be knocking it to the ground and rebuilding it. The upper end of the site, where you see this new building sitting, is a very logical place to put the new function. It's adjacent to a, to one of the two major driveway entrances. It's also up on a higher portion of the site, so we think that it has better visibility and sort of focal point identity. One of the comments that was made during our architectural review was the style of the building, and the fact that it is pretty distinctly different than the residential buildings. And one of the reasons that we departed from how the residential buildings are configured is sort of twofold. One is that the residential buildings are two-story, pretty plain, simple boxes with a single ridge line, and when we imparted both the leasing function and the recreational functions into this building, because its use is so intense, it's a much larger building, and so if we were to create two-story walls all the way around the building and do a single ridge line, the building would seem much more massive. And so this was sort of our effort, the final rendition of this, to downsize the verticality of the building, create some interesting architectural features. We are using a paint scheme and materials on this building that we'll tie to and be consistent with the residential buildings, all the while the form is different. But we feel that the form should be different. It's a different function, and it's a focal point on the property, so it was a very intentional sort of a departure. In terms of the monument sign, we did, as Laura mentioned, we did go through quite a bit of onsite sort of renovation of that sign and the length of that sign. I think that in this rendering that you see, the final resolution was that we cut the length of the sign back about five feet, and we did look at the view angles coming in and out of the driveway to make sure that we weren't obstructing views, because this was sort of one of the things that was of primary importance when we were looking at it related to traffic. There were some other issues about traffic flow coming in and out of the driveway, so we, we looked at this quite extensively as far as view in and out of this driveway. The other thing that I can tell you is that that driveway throat opening was much smaller previously, and now I think we're up around 35 feet of driveway width at the opening. So we have, we think that we have very good visibility, and certainly much better than what we had previously before we imparted the building onto this location. So we just believe overall this is a very nice enhancement to the property. It'll, it'll keep it sort of, you know, consistent with other product that's in the marketplace. It has very nice amenities, and it's gonna provide, I think, a nice feature for the property and make the, give the longevity of the project, you know, it'll just make it a project that'll last longer and be more consistent. And I'm here to answer any other questions that you have.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing at this time, but any members of the public like to address the council regarding this item?
Alan Lubke, Fleetwood Drive. I don't think that the first reading of any city ordinance should be waived, and I request that the proposed city ordinance be read. This reading will provide television viewers, particularly those who don't get to the library and don't get to City Hall, the chance for full access to the information.
My name is Maxine Driscoll, and I live on Piedmont Avenue. I understand that when the Crystal Springs apartments were first built, the number of parking places was deemed adequate and met the code in effect at that time. Now, tonight, I thought I heard you say that there were 67 parking places for 132 units. I hope I heard that incorrectly. Anyway, it's quite obvious that the current renters have more cars than there are available parking places. The inadequacy of the site parking is obvious by the number of cars parked on the street that goes over the freeway and into Cressmore Avenue. On most weekends and evenings, that street parking is at capacity. Since I recognize the same cars parked there night after night, the cars must belong to the renters and not to visitors to the apartments. Periodically, the city workers post signs on the overpass stating no parking and a date. In fact, they did that a few days ago. They do this in order to clean the large amount of trash and debris left by the people who park there. They clean, and right now, it's fairly clean for that area, but then the trash begins to accumulate again. As I drive up Crystal Springs Road, I frequently notice the gardeners taking excellent care of the land, apartment landscaping. It's really nice. It's pleasant to drive by that complex. Then I see the messy trash on the overpass. It is sometimes really a disgusting sight. There is also the danger that this trash might blow over the railing and onto the freeway below, causing an accident. Perhaps the apartment management could do one of the following. One, ask their tenants not to use the street or the overpass as their personal trash cans. Or, two, they might instruct their groundskeepers to remove the trash left by their tenants on this overpass. I'm bringing this to your attention because I think we all want a clean and safe city and streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public which speak on this? Seeing none?
Moved to close public hearing? Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. Any question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. A couple of questions to the city attorney. Give us the little parameters on first readings, reading them, not reading them.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the government code again allows city councils to waive the reading word by word of an entire ordinance. This is quite common. Virtually every city in California does it. The, probably the most direct answer, it's done every time by virtually every city. I have, in all my experience, have never seen a city council read through an entire ordinance. That ordinance is, it's, it's in the agenda packet. If someone wanted to read the entire thing, probably the reason the law allows the waiving of the, reading of the ordinance is that, you know, it's followed a public hearing, it's followed a staff report, and the reading of the ordinance would probably be redundant. It's available online as well.
All right, thank you. To community development regarding parking, can you address that? There was a little question on what was heard and what?
So right now, there are 628 parking spaces on site, and the current parking ratio is 1.45 parking spaces per unit. When it was originally approved, there was a difference between the number of parking spaces per bedrooms and things like that, a little bit different than what our code allows today. So under the proposed conditions, there would be 437 units, 639 parking spaces, for a parking ratio of 1.46 parking spaces. So that's a slight increase, very slight increase from pre-project conditions.
Okay. Did the issue of the overpass and cleaning and parking on the overpass ever come up in planning or?
We have seen people parking on the overpass, and there were residents that told us that that was the case. We did not receive any concerns prior to this in regards to trash on the overpass.
Okay. Do you know of any, any issues, maybe Public Works can answer this, with street cleaning? Do we have any issues up there that are extraordinary?
Honorable Mayor, council members, good evening. This new section of, the special attention was added to our program, I think, two years ago, based on your direction. Wasn't a special program developed or Public Works did not clean this section of the overpass before. Right now, I didn't, was told by one of the resident that just was cleaned by Public Services a few days ago. Yes, I heard comment that whenever they are going back, it's very messy, but wasn't brought to my attention that this would create any special concern.
All right, thank you. City manager?
I was just gonna add that, that additional special attention with the periodic special cleaning where cars are not allowed to park for a period of time in order that the street sweeper and the Public Works crews can get in, was necessitated by some amount of concern that has occurred over a number of years. This procedure is similar to what we do down along Shelter Creek Lane, and has been a very effective means of maintaining at least a reasonable level of attention to those areas, but I think the director articulated exactly what we do and what we've observed up there.
Okay. And maybe just as an aside, the management could kind of get the word out to encourage people to take care of their, their trash, their coffee cups and things. We'd really appreciate that. It would help us out.
Through the?
Irene?
Thank you. Does anyone know where the nearest trash can closest to you is from there? Is there any way that you could put a trash can close by that people would be encouraged to throw their trash in there instead of on the street? Yes, no, maybe?
The overpass is on this one.
It's too far?
Yeah, it's too far.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Let's see how that goes going forward. If not, we'll get you back here and have a little talk. Michael?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of, a couple of things. Mr. Lubke, regarding your, your question about the reading of the ordinance, I know when, when I was sitting down there, I was also wondering why we never got to hear the ordinance is read, and actually, after reading a few of them, I don't regret not having that happen. I would ask the city manager, or the city clerk, if somebody is interested in reading an ordinance prior to one of our meetings, is that made available to the public?
Absolutely. The packet is posted online. Mr. Lubke has correctly identified that not everybody has access to computerized information, however. In addition to making it available in that manner, the packet is available at the San Bruno Public Library. It is available through the city clerk's office at City Hall, and we make available any agenda items in written form to individuals who request that information. I believe the clerk is well-prepared to provide that by mail or in the manner that the resident or interested party wishes to receive it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's correct. A summary, the law requires that we provide a summary, at least of the ordinance, to be published in the newspaper at least 10 days prior to any public hearing, so we do that as well.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Lubke, hopefully that gives you some options.
Yes, my, my request was based upon principle, and the principle stems from historic goings-on at these meetings, particularly with regard to several years ago, the proposal of an increase in sales tax. And that particular ordinance, proposed ordinance, was, first reading was waived, second reading was waived, and, you know, there's no excuse for that, because we have people who rely solely on their knowledge of what's going on here at the city council meeting with what is seen here on television. So I just ask that we have more open visibility, and we not try to hide anything. I felt that at the time of that sales tax was proposed, that-
Mr. Lubke, let's don't get off the track here, all right? It's been made very clear that this ordinance is readily available for anyone who wants to read it. Any action by the city council? We need two actions here.
Through the chair, before we do that, I would like to encourage the management also to, a little outreach to the residents, and I, and I'm probably gonna go, I'm gonna assume that a majority of those that park on the overpass are residents of Crystal Springs Terrace Apartments. There may be some that park, that live up the hill in other, but if that's the case, that a majority of them do park there, I would hope that they can take some care, just like the resident says, in helping maintain, you know, the beauty, the beauty of that, of that area. And if they don't, I'm sure- And if they don't, I'm sure this resident or other residents may come to us, and we may not be as accommodating, because we can, we can put restrictions on that parking. So, with that, unless there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading.
And based on the motions, comments, I will also concur with everything you just said and second that.
Motion to, motion second to waive the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Through the chair, I'd like to introduce the ordinance or adopt the resolution.
Ordinance first.
Or introduce the ordinance for adoption?
The ordinance. Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And now, I'd like to adopt the resolution approving the planned development permit and architectural review permit.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda is pursuant to state law. Any member like to speak under public comment?
My name is Alan Lubke, live on Fleetwood Drive. And Mr. Mayor, at the closed session of the October 12th meeting, you said that donations being received by the city should be posted so that people can see the amounts and where they have come from. Have these been posted, and where can we see, see them?
I don't believe we have that yet, but that's being worked on. City manager?
We can certainly provide a list, we can post that at City Hall. I'm assuming we're talking about the donations for the Glenview Fire victims? Is that, is that the topic?
We're talking about the fire, Glenview Fire, the pipeline explosion?
Yeah. Yes, we will post that.
Of just reinforcing your...
Yes, we will post that at City Hall. As you know, from tonight, we're still getting donations in on a daily basis, so...
I, I would like to see an agenda item on the next city council meeting with a report on the execution of the recommendations from the Traffic and Safety Committee and approval by the city council to implement the solutions to traffic calming resulting from the extensive study of traffic conditions on Fleetwood Drive by a private group under contract with the city.
Thank you. Any other members of the public on public comment? All right, we'll move right to item number 10, conduct of business. Item 10A is receive oral report and review status of local emergency related to the Glenview Fire area and adopt a resolution continuing the declaration of local emergency. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. At the special meeting that was held last Tuesday evening, the city council authorized me to execute a contract with a qualified construction contractor to provide certain slope stability improvements at the, at the mouth of the canyon, just adjacent to the Glenview explosion and fire location. That is a particularly sensitive and important issue at the current time because with the completion of the demolition and debris removal process over the past approximately 10 days, the canyon is now bare of its previous vegetation and, and in particular, trees that were seriously burned and damaged, destroyed in the fire. The work to complete the immediate tasks of providing erosion control at the face of the canyon and to provide a, to provide treatment in the bottom of the canyon for erosion control purposes is approximately, at this point, approximately one-third complete. Work is continuing, and staff advises me that we are on track to complete that initial phase of the work within the necessary timeframe to deal with the continuing and coming more severe winter storms. Additional phases of this work, as we discussed with council at the meeting last week, will consist of improvements, rebuilding of retaining walls in two locations where fire damage seriously compromised the integrity of the walls and their ability to perform their required functions as retaining structures in sensitive areas of the canyon adjacent to private properties. That work has not yet begun, but is in the, is in the planning phases, coordination with the contractor, and mobilizing and making the necessary arrangements with the adjacent private property owners. With that said, the need to continue the existence of the emergency conditions continues, and at this point, I anticipate continuation of the local emergency declaration, at least through the beginning of the rainy season, and at the minimum, the completion of this necessary work in the canyon. We are continuing to evaluate the need for the continuation of the local emergency, and will certainly advise the city council at the earliest possible time when we're able to determine that those provisions are no longer necessary.
Okay. Any questions of the city manager regarding... Michael?
Was there any noticeable change to the, to the area after the rain that we got this last weekend? Are we seeing any sort of impact from the limited amount of rain that's been so far?
I, I would like to ask the director to respond. What I can tell you is that staff has been carefully monitoring the area, along with our construction contractor, because obviously, we're, we're also watching the rain predictions very carefully and mobilizing as needed to stay on top of what's going on out there.
The slopes of the canyon were protected before the rain came, and the protection was...
A little closer, Clara. Thank you.
And the protection was monitored even during the rain, and also some additional work needed to be done Sunday after the Saturday rain, and was done by the contractor. And when it dawned, certainly, there was no change, no damage.
Clara, you better start again.
You heard me or I have to repeat?
Yeah, you should repeat it for the, for the listening audience.
Based on the work, preparatory work done for the slope of the canyon before the rain came, was no damage to the slope of the canyon at all.
Okay, thank you. And can you, while you're down here, can you comment on the overall safety of the area? Just, is it, is it still considered a hazardous area within the area that's quadrant, did not fence up?
If you are referring to the canyon itself, I...
Actually, the entire area, including the streets.
Certainly, from a public health and safety point of view, the public health emergency was lifted by the county weeks ago. That means is, does not present any health risk at this time to the residents of the area. Certain portion of the sidewalk and the street are damaged behind repair, but those sections are close to the public entirely. It's only just, anybody can access that protected area, only just based on special permit, like doing any kind of work in the area, or the residents already moved back to that closed area. Before any, any additional changes in the overall restriction of the area will be lifted, then further restriction and protection of those damaged area will be implemented. How I said, certain portion of the sidewalk and street are unsafe, and those will be closed before any general access will be allowed in that area.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on this item?
If there's none, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution continuing the declaration of local emergency.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item B, adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule rental rate for senior center assembly room, allowing use of the kitchen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. While approving the master fee schedule as part of the 2010-2011 budget process, the city council asked staff to work with both the senior advisory board and the Parks and Recreation Commission to develop a process that would allow renters of this room here in the senior center, use of some of the equipment in the kitchen. Staff met with both bodies, worked through the interests of both that are listed in your packet, and developed the following recommendation. That renters of the facility would be allowed to use the kitchen's steam table, oven, and stove. They would pay for one additional building attendant. There would not be an additional cost to use the room, but they would pay for the additional building attendant, and that building attendant is the person who would directly operate the equipment. They would be trained on how to use the equipment, and therefore, it would, it would make sure that the equipment was available for use for the lunch programs the following days. The renters will be barred from use of the facility from future rentals if they abuse the facility in any way, and if they go outside of the boundaries. The specific action tonight that is being presented to you would amend the master fee schedule to indicate that renters using the kitchen must pay for one additional facility attendant for the use of the kitchen. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and there are members of the senior advisory board here in our audience.
Question for you, Randy. It says here that the attendant will oversee users by operating the kitchen equipment. So, if I come in and I want to rent the facility and I have, you know, 500 frozen pies, is that, is that...
He's the cook.
Is he going to cook it for me, or is she going to cook it for me?
Well, they'll make sure that they, they turn on the stove and the oven properly, and if there's any issues with it, you would see the facility attendant. But in terms of stirring the spaghetti and putting the items in and out, the recipes are all on the renters still.
So, this would be someone that would be trained to oversee the use of the, use of the items, right?
And to make sure that they turn it on properly, that they adjust temperatures as necessary, that things are turned off properly, that the care is taking care, that the care is provided to the equipment. The senior advisory board's largest concern is that they cook several hundred meals on a daily basis, and that the equipment needs to be in shape for those meals.
Okay, and I see you have a new lockable refrigerator in, in this request also?
One of the items that people talked about, both on the Parks and Rec Commission and from the city council, is additional space for refrigerated or freezer items. The space that's currently available for such uses in the kitchen is full with all of the items for the lunch program. We would be purchasing out of the funds of the senior division, and new refrigerator, freezer would be pushed, to be placed in the closet behind me, and the facility tenant would make that refrigerator, freezer available to the renters as necessary.
Questions?
Through the chair. So, on a Saturday night, we have a big fundraiser here, and they typically come in, they rent the facility four hours minimum, and some go, it's meant just six, seven hours. So, the, the extra attendant that would be overseeing the kitchen, how would that be figured into the cost? Is that the entire time of the rental, or is that for just the amount of time that there's cooking?
It would be the entire time of the rental. The original facility attendant would actually be here a little bit before the group arrives and after they leave to handle the setup and the cleanup. The facility attendant who is here because of the kitchen would be here just the time that the party is scheduled, and that is at the $15 an hour rate that is listed in the master fee schedule.
So, okay.
So, for a six-hour party, they would be here for the six hours. The groups, most of the time, the groups going to continue to use it, are not going to just do the cooking and leave and come back. They're still going to do cleanup and those things, and that facility tenant will be there the whole time that the kitchen is occupied for the rental.
So, it would be the same as what you pay the, the attendant outside for the amount of hours?
The hourly rate is the same. It would actually probably be, typically would be about an hour less, possibly two hours less. If you have that four-hour rental, you are usually paying the first facility attendant to be here before your party starts. They need to set up the tables and the chairs and those things. And then, they are here after you have left the facility on your four-hour party. They need to clean up and put away tables and chairs and some of those functions, so that you're usually paying the first facility tenant for maybe an hour longer than the party goes. Four-hour rental, you're probably paying the facility tenant for five hours. They're here to open and close in addition to being here during your event.
Okay, and I noticed on the fee schedule that that's not included in the, in the master fee, so we add that on to the actual rental of the facility. And, and this case, and then, and then with the extra, the kitchen, what are we calling it? Kitchen, kitchen monitor, that would add also. So, we're talking probably a couple hundred dollars on top of the actual rental of the facility?
I would guess 60 to 100 and, 110 dollars.
For two, for two, for two attendants.
That they're in here. We are not recommending any additional charge for the facility, with the concept being that more rentals would still generate more revenues from the city. When our intern, a couple of months ago, did a study of all of the, a survey of all of the similar facilities throughout the county, the fees of this were a little bit higher. The idea was to include that and not to raise the fees for the facility as well.
But we are raising the fees because now we're paying for someone else to...
Questions?
Through the chair. I probably am unique in the sense that, one, this building opened up in 1987, we had the first wedding reception, which was the O'Brien wedding. I remember renting that with Wendy Mines. So, I had the privilege of renting out the facility here, and back then, we did allow this usage of these items. Back then, though, we didn't have the daily meal preparation that was done, the county brought it in. So, I know there's a concern of balancing. I'm hoping that the refrigeration unit will help that, because obviously, it's full where before we are able to accommodate a renter. I know it's not specified here, but, and it's not included to be able to use it, but I do not believe the dishwasher should be able to be utilized by the group. I think that's, and I know it doesn't say, but I just want us on the same page. My recommendation would be not. I've seen too many times when we rented it out back then, don't know how it is today, that it's just not used properly. They try to think you can put all kinds of stuff through it, which is, it, it just doesn't function, and it, it usually breaks it down. So, that would be a recommendation of mine. Also, if we find that there's problems, if this is adopted in going forward, I would hope that staff or the commissioner board would come back, I would say the board, because they're the ones who have the day-to-day operations in here, and will know, obviously, way before we will, if there's a concern or problem. I think it was of a benefit back then for, for users to have some of those items available to them. There was not an attendant back then. I think that's something that I think the school district uses, that I think has been of a benefit to them in order to continue their lunch program, because ours is crucial to the needs of the seniors of this community and the surrounding communities. So, though I am in favor of us moving forward with an attendant, so I think anyone that we get from here that's going to watch that will have the same love and care as if it were their own kitchen. And so, I think that will be an intricate part to ensure a good event and that the kitchen is ready to go for the seniors on Monday morning.
So, Randy, the dishwasher is not mentioned? Was it ever talked about?
It was talked about extensively, and staff and the board and the commission all agree with the vice mayor's opinion. It's an item, it's difficult to use, it does break down quite often. It takes a lot of time to use if, if you're talking about large parties. Most people are using caterers anyway. They can just load things up, and they can take them back to their place and do the cleaning back there. There's been very few requests for it. It's more of requests for, to bring in lasagnas or things like that, to heat them up in the stove, to use the steam tables. Washing dishes is not something that we get much of anyway, and so, it's not part of the recommendation.
Okay, so that's not included?
It's not included.
All right. Any questions or action?
One last question, if I could. Were any of the regular groups that use the facility, were they contacted and asked if they, you know, if this was a better thing for them to be able to use the kitchen at an added cost?
They were not specifically asked about that for this recommendation. Staff and the board both felt that the items here are the items that they have requested to use in the past. So it met their interest, but no, you are correct. We did not specifically go out and ask them their opinion of this.
In the previous request, was it said that we'd pay for it if we were able to use it? Any comments like that that you recall?
That I cannot answer. I don't know.
Through the chair.
All right.
Just to be clear, if you do not want to use those items, you do not have to pay for an attendant. So when you rent, so when people come up and they say, "I want to rent this place, and I want to do this, and I want to do that", it, I'm assuming you're gonna make it very clear to them, this is, to do the kitchen, this is this, and this, you know, A, B, and C, and these are all the things that you need to do.
Well, there is one facility tenant with any of the rentals that here, there's always somebody on duty. This would be for an additional person just for the kitchen. If you did not want to use the kitchen, then the facility tenant who is here would just make sure that you do not have access to the kitchen. You do not get to use the equipment at all.
Right. I'm just saying, when people ask to rent this place, that those choices are clear to them. Okay.
We will do that, yes.
I apologize. Mr. Mayor, one follow-up. Let me just give an example. If we have a elementary school here that's having a dinner, and they're utilizing the kitchen only to use as a serving area for refreshments, and maybe they use the steam table to have ice, and the refreshment's in there as they hand them out. That would then, would that constitute an additional attendant, or would it not?
It would not. It would be the same as it's been handled at this point. It would just be the use of the equipment. If they're turning on the ovens, if they're turning on the steam tables, if they're turning on the stove, those types of things would necessitate the additional building attendant.
Thank you.
Okay. Any action?
Let's do it. I'd like to adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item C, adopt a resolution approving new red curb on the north side of Sylvan Avenue west of Maryland Place, on the east side of Mastic Avenue, north and south of Maryland Place, and the north side of Commodore Drive, east and west of the parking lot entrance to Peninsula Place condominiums, located at 1126 Cherry Avenue.
I'm the mayor and members of the city council.
Let me do, let me do one more thing. I'm just gonna back up my prerogative if it's all right with you.
You're the mayor.
Do you want to say something regarding the last item at the podium, please?
My name's Gloria Dieter. I'm the nutrition site manager. I cook over anywhere from 460 meals to 600 meals a week here on the site. And as a devil's advocate, so we do open up our kitchen and our facility and some of our equipment. And something does go wrong, who's to say that I come in on Monday morning and I don't have my equipment and the facility running up to its functionality? You know, who's to say that I have to use the stove, the oven, steam table, which is not, steam table has not been a problem, but we have, you know, very sensitive, you know, equipment. And I'm coming in here to provide a service to my community, and if my equipment is not up to its proper working order, what do I do? What's the answer to that?
Randy, could you address this at the podium, but that's, we're not moving too many people around? I would guess that there's plenty of deposit in place, number one, if there is in fact, if somebody breaks something. But number two, I would guess that the new attendant that would be in charge that is trained to operate this stuff is gonna make sure that it's operating before and after that rental party leaves.
That is correct. There's both the deposit and the facility attendant would immediately know before the event left if things were in proper working order. If they were not, we would be contacting Facilities Division. It would be working on the issues immediately. But the reason to have the facility attendant is to make sure that everything here is in proper working order, that they are the ones that are touching the knobs, buttons, et cetera, and not the renters. That was also one of the conditions from the senior advisory board. That's why they asked that if people do abuse this, if they can be barred from future uses. That'd be very difficult to do for private parties. It would be more something that would be going on for organizations.
Through the chair, and I appreciate the question, because I'll be the first to say, getting called out at 1:00 AM in the morning to mop floors. Ray Gomes taught me how to mop a floor correctly, because he was in the military. Is that, is there some provision that all of a sudden the attendant's taking stock and inventory? Notices that at midnight going into Sunday, that obviously there's a concern. Whom would they contact on that Sunday to try to make any type of necessary arrangements so that Monday it is functioning and operational for the needs of the seniors?
They would contact either the supervisor of the Facilities Division, Renee Walsh. They can contact the head of the senior division, or they can contact me, and we will be working with them depending on what the issues are.
If it's mopping floors, I can help you, but in that category, I'm probably not.
If it's mopping floors and those things, there is a custodial company that's also coming in. On weekdays, we do have 23 hours a day. There is a custodian on duty somewhere within the city. That is not true for weekends. But the supervisor of the Facilities Division is available, or we do have lead persons. So all the facility tenants would have a list of phone numbers to contact.
So we'll have a contingency plan in place, just in case the unforeseen may happen.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And you heard the vice mayor is available for mopping.
Mopping only. I haven't forgotten how to do that here. It's been a while.
Now we will go to item 10C.
Good evening again. The draft resolution before you tonight is to install red curbs at five different locations. The first slide is for Maryland Place. Staff receive a letter from a local resident indicating that prep vehicles on Sylvan Avenue obstruct entry to the one-way Maryland Place, and that there's a limited clear sight distance at the exit to Mastic Avenue. Staff conducted a study and presented the result to the TSBC. Staff validated the turning movement concern and identified there is a sight distance deficiency. Staff is forwarding TSBC's recommendation for council's consideration to install 10 feet of red curb on Sylvan Avenue west of the entrance to Maryland Place to improve vehicle turning movement, especially for emergency vehicles. Second, is to install 10 feet and 40 feet of red curb along Mastic Avenue, north and south of Maryland Place to improve the sight distance for motorists exiting Maryland Place. This recommendation would not result loss of, excuse me, loss of standard street parking on Sylvan Avenue. However, there would be three lots on Mastic Avenue. The second slide is the location for Commodore Drive. Staff receive a letter from the manager of Peninsula Place condominiums requesting options to improve visibility when exiting the parking lot on Commodore Drive. Staff conducted a study and presented the result to TSBC. Staff identified there is a limited sight distance at this location, and is forwarding their recommendation for your consideration. Their recommendation is to install 40 feet and 10 feet of red curb on Commodore Drive, east and west of the parking lot entrance to improve sight distance for motorists exiting the parking lot. This recommendation would result in total of three standard parking spaces. That concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Any questions? Michael?
Going back to the, to the first location. I drove down Maryland Place, and it's a very narrow street, and there's not a lot of parking, although there are some driveways in there. But I noticed that on Mastic, half of the street is all red. The very top end near Angus is, I believe, two-hour parking. And the parking lots that are, that service to businesses have five-hour limits. And there's a number of driveways along the rest of Mastic, which leave very few parking spots. So I'm wondering if we lose a couple more parking spots there. I think it's gonna have a pretty significant impact. It seems like there's already nowhere to park.
The city, the city-operated parking lot is, I believe, the time limit of restriction ends at 6:00. So there is options for the local residents to park in the city-operated parking lot. You, we could, you have the option to modify this resolution and to shorten the red curb distance.
Okay, well, okay. And the recommendation based on the visibility there, did that have something to do with the amount of traffic or the speed of the traffic on Mastic? Because it doesn't seem that limited, and it seems like it's not, at least not a major thoroughfare.
Traffic, traffic speed and volume-wise, I believe, it's normal. It's not high volume, and it's not high speed. But with cars parked, especially as you exit Maryland onto Mastic, for the left, your left, as the driver looking at that side, it's a little bit difficult when cars are all parked, and then 40 feet down, there is a driveway. And if the residents park their larger vehicle on the driveway and not into their garage, it just, it makes that sight distance even more limited.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the chair. 40 feet seems like a long, like a long distance. Now, you just mentioned that 40 feet goes to the, to the next driveway. Is that just a random number, or is, I mean, or is the, the preferred, preferred sight distance is always 40? Because I noticed on the other, on the other proposal, it's also 40 feet, 10 and 40. So I'm just saying, is, is there, is there a, is there ability without losing that sense of safety? Is there ability to be less than 40, or is, or...
We use the standard traffic uniform code, and basically, we, based on the traffic speed, we use a table to, as a reference, to calculate how much of the sight distance a motorist would need exiting certain intersection, or in this case, the narrow driveway you might. So if there's, like I said, we could, there's an option that we can shorten it. And if there is a persistent problem, we can come back and increase the red curb length.
Through the chair.
All right.
I'm with Ken. I think 40 feet is awful long. So how long is a standard parking space?
20.
20 feet. 20 feet. So if we just made that particular one 20...
You have to improve.
If you make it 10, you're still losing two parking spaces. So you need to, if you left it 20, you'd leave one parking space. Is that how it works?
For Mastic, that would be, because the total, we're calculating the available length. So from the entrance, for example, the one that is for 10 feet, we lose, we lost one there, because, for example, if the, the clear distance over there without restriction, it's 50 feet right now. That gives us two standard parking spaces, even though there's leftover. But if we take away one, we, that could still give you two. But then in the 40 feet example, whether you take 10 or 20, you lose one, for sure.
Okay, so if we, if we, would you be comfortable with 20? I mean, it just seems, 40 is a long, I mean, 40 is, this is about 40, right? This, this distance?
Yeah.
Is it this more?
Yeah, this whole building is 40 feet wide.
Yeah, so, I suggest we do 20 and 10. And if, as you say, it comes, and it's still a difficulty and still causes problems, then you can come back. But my suggestion is 20 and 10.
Because if I could ask, because currently, with no restrictions, people are parking right up to the corner?
Yes, right.
So at least we'll get 10 and 20 feet of relief, which should help, should improve the visibility.
By what? So, do you want, is that one resolution?
Yeah, I believe we do it with one resolution.
Oh, it's all one? Okay.
If you do it with one resolution.
Problem with 40 and the Commodore?
Yeah, do you want it on the other one?
Yeah. Yes.
I lost it. No, I can't find it.
It's the same thing on Commodore, 10 and 40.
The one, so the one on Commodore, I say, so is this a separate resolution? It looks here that it's, this one and the one on Commodore are a combined resolution? Okay, so I'm suggesting 20 and 10 on this one, and on the Commodore. Tell me again why it's 40 on the Commodore? I mean, why 40 and not 20?
Basically the same thing.
Basically the same thing.
We're using the same table as a reference, and it gives us the distance as a guideline.
Okay, is there anything now at all?
There is not right now on Commodore Drive.
Okay.
Both sides are not restricted.
And I understand as you're coming out left, why you'd want more line of sight. But again, 40 feet seems like an awful lot. So again, I suggest 10 and 20.
City manager, do you have a question? No.
So unless there's other comments, I'll introduce the resolution with 10 and 20 on both pieces. And if there's complaints that come up after that, to bring it back to us.
Does that clear this up?
Yes. Okay, so I'll introduce the resolution with those clarifications or changes.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with ERS Industrial Services, Inc. in the amount of $32,970 for the well number 16 filter project.
Good evening, your honorable mayor and council members. Thank you for your time. I'm here on behalf of Public Services, and tonight we're gonna be recommending, awarding the filter media replacement bid for well 16 to ERS Industrial in the amount of $32,970. The media is used to remove iron and manganese from the groundwater. This is a routine filter maintenance, which takes place roughly every 10 years as the filter media loses its effectiveness. On August 30th of 2010, an RFP was issued, and on September 14th of 2010, the city received four competitive bids with ERS Industrial as the low bidder. Public Service recommends awarding the bid to ERS Industrial.
Okay, this is just standard maintenance?
Exactly.
Okay. Questions or action?
Thank you. Didn't introduce yourself.
Marty Cardone, Water Services Manager.
Since you stayed, I thought you'd at least get acknowledged.
Thanks.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I have a question. Is there differences in the filters themselves? I mean, are we buying the best quality filter that we can?
It's the media, so it's inside, it's inside the filter. It's, the vessels stay the same. It's just that inside is losing its effectiveness. So there's, there's four elements. There's gravel, there's cement, gravel, sand, and anthracite coal. And over time, they just wear out.
Okay, so there's, there's nothing, I mean, if we spend a little more money, we're not gonna get a better product. It's just what it is?
No, no. It's the best available.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes. I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item ten E, receive a quarterly financial report as of September two thousand and ten for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven general funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds budget.
Money? Is that money? Man, I'm tired.
This item is to review the first quarter results for the general funds, special revenue funds, internal service funds, and the enterprise funds of the city. We begin with the general fund. For the first, for the first quarter, revenues are at sixteen percent of budget, or four point nine million dollars. This is comparable to the same level that we had in the prior year. One of the primary reasons that revenues are not exactly twenty-five percent is that there's seasonality in revenues. For instance, property taxes, one of the major revenues, in which we don't receive the revenues until the latter part of the calendar year. First installment is not due from the county, for instance, until December, and the second installment until April, May. So I'll go over some of the key revenues, the larger revenues for the general fund. I'll start with property taxes. As I mentioned earlier, these are received during the latter part of the fiscal year. And currently, through the first quarter, we're only at one percent. But that's really comparable to what we expect on a, on a fiscal year basis. We did get information from the county in terms of revenue estimates for the city of San Bruno. And our budgets are very comparable to that level. So I do expect that at the end of the fiscal year, we'll be very close in meeting the budgeted targets for property taxes. Next, we'll go to sales tax. Sales tax is the second largest general fund revenue category. And through the first three months, we're at nine percent of the budget. Now, this only includes the first month of revenues. Sales taxes are traditionally received in arrears with estimates based on prior year's levels and adjustments based on state's estimates of growth or negative growth, for that matter. We did receive some positive news from our sales tax consultants. In the last quarter, sales tax revenues were up around four point seven percent compared to the same period of the prior year. So while one quarter does not really make the trends, certainly it's a positive sign for, for the city. And since I'm talking about positive signs, another element or another category of revenues that's showing some positive growth is in the area of TOT tax. One of the better measurements in terms of the health, in terms of revenue health for the city, is TOT, because we get those revenues on a monthly basis. As the hotel properties, motel properties receive the, the TOT taxes that they collect, we receive, the city has remitted those amounts one month in arrears. So it's a good grammar in terms of how things are going. And in terms, in terms of TOT revenues, even though it's not in the top five category, we're seeing an excess of thirty percent growth. Now, some of that growth is contributed by the fact that we increased TOT rate from ten percent to twelve percent back in November of two thousand and nine. However, even if I shave that off, we still do see positive growth in that area. So again, some positive signs. But I, I want to reemphasize a little bit of a caveat. You know, two months of TOT revenues doesn't really tell us we're not, we're going to be able to hit revenue target, revenue targets for the entire general fund at the conclusion of, of the twelve-month period. I'll move on to the next largest category, which is, actually, I'm not moving along in here. Next, next largest category is vehicle license fee. Most of the vehicle license fee is actually an in-lu payment, paid with property tax. And therefore, we're seeing a very small amount through the first three months. And again, we'll see that money when we get the property tax revenues come December. Majority of that three point three million dollars is in, in lieu money there. Next category is charges for services. What those are, are primarily cost allocations to the various departments and the various funds. And then a smaller portion of that is really the billing services that we provide for the garbage services there. So we're right at the twenty-five percent level for the, for the three-month period. And the last of the larger categories in terms of general funds is use of money and property. That includes investment earnings from our investment portfolio. And it also includes the equity earnings from our cable TV operations. In terms of investment earnings, we're, we're seeing some challenges in terms of potentially meeting, meeting that target, only from the perspective that the Federal Reserve continues to support growth in the economy by pushing down interest rates and buying back treasuries. That, that way, what, what that does is actually drives down interest rates in the marketplace. And therefore, the investments that we make, whether it's buying bonds out there in the open market or investing in Lake and/or the San Mateo County pool, those, the interest earnings on those are, are getting pressured as rates in, in the overall climate continue to decline. And then move into the top five, if I may, on the departmental revenues. And these include police services, primarily from traffic fines that we have, and also reimbursements from, there's, there's actually a grant that we get from the state for a hundred thousand dollars. And then we also get some Prop 172 money from sales tax. So that's the primary contributor in terms of police. And as you can tell by the slide, we're very comparable to the same level we had last year, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars versus two, two thirty-two from the prior year. Next largest category for departmental revenues is from the community services department. That includes our recreation, senior centers, and parks. And we're a little bit ahead in terms of revenue dollars, twenty-three thousand dollars higher than we were previously. And we're at thirty-one percent of budget. Obviously, there's some seasonality in terms of that department. With the summer, there's recreation programs and aquatic programs, and therefore, a little bit higher revenues than, than a twenty-five percent calculation there. Next category is for engineering and, and streets. And those are really from gas tax, primarily from the gas tax that the state pays us, and from encroachment permit fees that we have. And that's right at the twenty-five percent mark and coming in, you know, kind of on target there. Next category is from the, the planning and building departments. And those are primary building and inspection fees. There are no new, no large projects that we, we've projected in for this category of revenues, as we were obviously very conservative in, in building our budgets and, and looking at the, the dollar amounts were, again, pretty comparable to the same, to the last year's level, one eighty-seven versus one seventy-five. And lastly, in terms of departmental revenues is from the fire department. Those are really from fire inspection fees that we collect. And much of that is actually built into the business license renewal process. And therefore, you see a very high amount in terms of percentage of budget, because the business license renewals takes place at the beginning of the fiscal year. I'll move on to expenditures for the general fund. As you can tell, as I mentioned earlier also, we're at twenty-four percent of the total expenditure budget. We're about seven point five million dollars compared to the overall budget of about thirty-one point four million dollars. Everything is really coming in with, within the budget. There's a couple of departments that are a little bit higher, and really, it's, again, because of the seasonality of the expenditures. So for instance, in terms of engineering and streets, we made a payment for C-CAG for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. That's a full-year assessment. And so that's, that's, you know, pushes the total expenditures up a little bit. The library includes payment, annual payment for the peninsula library system for our share costs. So that drives up that department's costs a little bit. But again, overall, we're within the targeted levels. One of the things that the city is obviously mindful of is obviously the Glenview Fire. We're continuing to incur costs for that incident. And obviously, we're working hard also to compile the costs for reimbursement from the state and, and federal government. Mindful of the fact that potentially would be some costs of the city. We were not able to fully recover from all the available resources out there. I'll move on to special revenue funds, and that's primarily the redevelopment agency. Again, the anomaly in terms of revenues for both the operating fund and the low and moderate income fund is really from the fact that the, the revenues are from the tax increment that's generated from the property tax bills. And therefore, we don't see those revenues until, again, the latter part of the calendar year and April, May of the following year. In terms of expenditures, obviously, we're in targets with, with those levels. We'll move into, on to the internal service funds, or primarily four internal service funds, the self-insurance, the building facility maintenance, garage, and the technology. Because these are internal service funds, we, accounting-wise, we just charge them sporadically, and therefore, it's at twenty-five percent of all the revenue categories. The only anomaly in terms of expenses is in the self-insurance. That's because we pay the insurance premiums upfront in July, and therefore, there's, there's that spike in the beginning of the year. I'll move on to the enterprise funds, four major enterprise funds, cable television, wastewater, water, and the stormwater funds. And again, looking at the overall percentages, they're all within li, in line. And again, with the, some of the other revenues I talked about earlier, the stormwater assessments is actually part of the property tax bills, and therefore, no dollars have been received. And we don't expect that out, again, until the December month, when, when we get our property tax revenues from the county. With that, I'll take any questions. This is an informational report. Any questions that the city council has, I'll, I'll take them right now.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair? I noticed that you were using as a baseline for last year, the initial approved budget, not the budget that we ended up with at the end of the year. And that, that budget was a lot larger, which would mean the percentages would be smaller. And so if we, if we were to look at that, it kind of makes it look like we're, if we're looking percentage-wise the same as last year, we're actually doing not so good. Because we know that last year, those percentages are, were, I mean, they didn't work out at the end of the year. And knowing what we know about, well, I mean, we, we can estimate, we can imagine what, what the, the costs related to the Glenview Fire are going to be. So we know that there's a variance there that we need to account for. We know last year that we had one-time contributions to the budget that aren't going to be there this year, or probably aren't going to be there this year. So given all that, it sounds like we're probably not in great shape.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, obviously, again, it's only one quarter worth of results. While there are some positive signs in terms of other revenues that I talked about, it's still important for staff to continue to monitor our expenses and make sure that, you know, we're, you know, spending within our limits there. And, and, you know, Glenview continues to be a major concern for us. There's a lot of expenditures and a lot of work to be done for, for that particular incident. And so I, I'm certainly not conveying to the city council that, you know, we're out in the woods by any means in terms of what's going on. Overall, economy, unemployment is still very, very high. There are some economists out there that still, that are thinking that the unemployment rate is going to remain high until twenty fourteen. Because, you know, there are just not enough signs from, from the experts that tell us that, you know, there's going to be a lot of, you know, rapid growth overall. So it's, it's certainly something that I, myself, am, am very conscientious of. And even though, you know, we're into October, we're actually not quite, not that far away from starting to think about the next year's budgets and any significant adjustments that, you know, we may have to account for between now and, you know, January of next year, when we meet again to talk about, you know, the, the results of the six-month period. So your point is well taken in terms of, you know, continue to monitor the, you know, the situation for both revenues and expenditures.
Okay. Any other questions? Irene?
Thank you. Are we keeping track, are you, keeping track of all the Glenview Fire expenditures in a separate accounting system?
Yes.
Or is it, okay?
Yes. We create a special fund, the Emergencies Disaster Fund, specifically for, for that purpose, so that we can monitor all the costs associated with the, with the incident, with the disaster.
Okay. So are, say, in January, might we hear a report about that too, and how it affects everything? Or is that too soon?
We can certainly include that as part of our report to the city council in January, just to give you an update on what the expenditures are for, for, you know, for that particular fund, for the disaster. Absolutely.
I, for one, would like to see that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Now we'll go to F, adopt a resolution approving first quarter budget amendments for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven general funds, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds budget, adopted budget.
Thank you. This is a review of the budget amendment, actually, a presentation of the budget amendments for the first quarter. So I'll go over them pretty quickly. For the general fund, the, there's a couple of adjustments for the revenue side of it. Shortly after we adopted the budget, we made a change and, and made a transfer in from the state library fund, so that we can pay for the library part-time hours. So what you see really on, on the top of the slide is the revenues coming in from the state library fund, and obviously, increasing the budget for the part-time salary. So, you know, twenty-two thousand dollars on top and the twenty-two thousand dollars on the bottom of our main, kind of the debits and the credits, the spending and, and the receiving of the, of the revenues. The next item there, in terms of reimbursement of police services study, is also an accounting item. We had not accounted for the reimbursement for the city of Millbrae, and also the associated costs for the share costs, sharing of the studying. And therefore, we have the revenues and the expenditures for that amount to be adjusted for our budget. And then lastly, in terms of the revenues for the general fund, we enter into a new contract with Nextel to update a site rental for cell phone tower. And that actually helped improve our revenue picture, expected revenues by about twelve thousand dollars. And then if I go on the, the appropriations side, the very last item, the city council authorized the recruitment for the city attorney. And there's some costs associated with that for, for twenty thousand dollars, and therefore, the adjustment for that amount to the general fund. Other funds, just to talk about the disaster, city council authorized appropriations for some geotechnical and structural engineering services for eighty-four thousand dollars, and also some security services for the Glenview area for a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Those were all presented to the city council during the first quarter. And then lastly, some expenditure items for the water fund and the wastewater fund. There was a purchase of seven water tank mixers that were approved by city council, and also wastewater metering study was approved for sixty-five thousand dollars. So those were the adjustments that were reviewed by city council and some internal adjustments that the staff is recommending for the first quarter for the city's funds. So I'll take any questions in terms of adjustments, budget amendments.
Through the chair? So you, you've listed the two, two items that we've, the two expenditures for as a result of the Glenview Fire.
That's correct.
So there's been no other expenditures from the actual disaster as far as first responders or, or other, other cities or other agencies or anything? There's been no, no exchange?
No, there, there obviously have been expenditures. In terms of first responders, not only have we incurred expenditures, there's obviously mutual aid expenditures that we're, we're compiling. In fact, we, we sent out recently a request to all the mutual aid agencies to provide us, so that we can collect all of those first responder costs, so that we can submit the claim to the state and for the FMAC grants that was approved. So absolutely, these, these only identify specific actions from the city council in terms of things that came to, for, came things that came forward, came forward to you for authorization. But absolutely, there are many more expenditures that's been accumulated in this fund that I just identified, and it sounds like it's something that the City Council would like to see when I do the next quarter's presentation.
Thank you.
If I could just add, the Finance Director indicated earlier that there, that these are only the costs that were incurred through, or amendment amounts that were approved by the City Council through September 30th. There have been, and in particular, there was authorization at the last council meeting in a much, in a significant amount, that will be reflected in the next quarters, the reports, and we can certainly provide cost information to the City Council prior to your January meeting. That's probably a little bit longer than you might really want to wait to get a sense of what our costs are to date, but as Finance Director indicated, we are actively in the process of compiling those costs at the current time.
Any other questions? An item F, needs some action?
Through the chair, I'd like to adopt the resolution approving first quarter budget adjustments.
Council Agent Member O'Connell?
Aye.
Council Agent Member Salazar?
Aye.
Council Agent Member O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Chair Ruane?
Aye. And item G, we have two resolutions. Adopt a resolution, number one, amending 2010-11 General Funds, Special Revenue Funds, and Enterprise Funds budget to reappropriate 2009-10 carryover encumbrances from reserve for encumbrances. And number two, amending the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency 2010-11 budget to reappropriate 2009-10 carryover encumbrances from reserve for encumbrances.
Thank you, Mayor. This is partly a new item for the City Council. It's something that we do in the accounting world. What happens is during the course of year, the city enters into various contracts with vendors, and sometimes, these contracts are not expended in its entirety during the course of the fiscal year. So, the unexpended amount are encumbrances that we carry forward and set aside and reserve against fund balance, so that when they do get expended in the subsequent fiscal year, we actually have that money set aside. So, what we do in terms of an accounting perspective is that we add on to the budget these encumbrances, and it's not new monies that the City Council is adding from the perspective of new expenditures for the current year, but it was really monies that we've had, we've earmarked from the prior year that we're using to pay for the current year's unexpended commitments. So, with that, we identify for the general, for the city, $265,000 worth of these encumbrance carryforwards, divided up into the various funds. The details of that is actually provided in your staff report as the attachment, kind of an align item basis, but looking at it from the fund perspective, there's $152,000 from the General Fund, $4,000 plus in the solid waste recycling fund, and then for some of the Enterprise Funds, the other amounts of carryforwards are identified on the slide before you. So, again, in aggregate, it's $265,000. If there are any questions pertaining to any one of the items that are itemized on the staff report attachment, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions on item? Action on item number one?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Council Agency Member O'Connell?
Aye.
Council Agency Chair Salazar?
Aye.
Council Agency Member O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Chair Ruane?
Aye. I guess we need to do two separately?
That's correct. The second one is for the Redevelopment Agency for $126,343 in aggregate.
Same reason. Any action?
Do it again. Introduce the resolution.
Council Agency Member Ibera?
Aye.
Council Agency Member Salazar?
Aye.
Council Agency Member O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Medina?
Aye.
Chair Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item number 11, reported commissions, forge committees, there are none tonight. Item number 12, comments from council members?
Through the chair?
No, go ahead.
Vice Mayor.
It's my understanding that, back when the disaster struck, that with Station 52 being within the vicinity of the devastation, that it was also given monies as its neighbors, the households. And I know that's been deposited, is my understanding, into the account that is separate, if that's correct. And my thought was, if it's permissible with the council, is to have those monies look toward possible reinvestment into Station 52, for monies we hadn't thought we were going to receive. A suggestion I would have, based on some of the information I had heard back on, from that evening, was maybe air conditioning. Our two fire stations have no air conditioning.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just a clarification. Received monies from?
PG&E.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. PG&E monies. This, during the disaster, it was used, since it had a generator, in order to have folks that came there to get treatment, or to have a shelter. It's also was utilized to have our personnel go back and try to rehab. And obviously, it's not always hot in San Bruno, but when it is, and you're trying to rest and recuperate, I think that's very challenging. So, with council's approval, maybe we can ask staff to bring back just a thought of that for AC at Station 52, and if there's monies left over, maybe we can look toward it being utilized at Station 51, as far as having AC for those facilities.
Better right with the council?
Through the chair?
Irene?
Not to negate what you said, I have no idea, first of all, how much money was given?
$15,000.
Okay. The other thing I'm thinking, I would feel more comfortable if the firemen and staff from that station tell us what they would like, and maybe they would like air conditioning, but maybe there's something else they would like, or would need, or whatever. So, incorporate?
That's why I want staff to bring that back, so I'm sure they can talk to the folks that they need to.
So, in essence, have staff come back and tell us what they would like done with the money?
I'm just throwing out a suggestion of one opportunity. If staff has these visions and other thoughts and opportunities that may exist, that after talking with staff or department head, then I'm sure they'll bring those forward as well.
Okay.
Better right with everybody?
Sure.
You have a consensus? You have some direction? Thank you.
Okay. Through the chair?
Yes, Irene?
I would just like to announce that usually, in October, in the first meeting of October, we have the beautification awards. Because of the changeability of our scheduling of council, regular council meetings, I decided to postpone those, and I would like to have that resurrected on November 23rd, the council meeting before Thanksgiving. I thought it would be appropriate to give thanks, not only for all the other things that we do have, but also to recognize the people in San Bruno that have their, submitted their applications for beautification awards and did indeed win, so.
Great.
Okay. There you go. That's what we're going to do.
Anyone else, Michael?
One comment, I wanted to see if the council would be interested in maybe having the city staff give us a presentation on any lessons learned from our experience with the fire, and if there's anything that we should be concentrating on, things that maybe didn't go well. I know the city staff has been probably extremely busy dealing still with the fire, but there might be some value in going through that exercise while things are still fairly fresh in everyone's minds, and we can document things that we believe we did well, and maybe some things that we can improve on.
I think we got the same request from a number of city councils up and down the peninsula, so that's good. All right, anything else? All right, and 13, we're going to go into closed session. The City Manager and Human Resource Director requested closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding direction for labor negotiations with the Public Safety Midmanagement and Police Bargaining Units. Item number 14, we will adjourn this meeting, and we won't have anything to report. We will adjourn this meeting until November 9th, right here at the Senior Center.